It's not helping matters and we continue to evaluate and we have the benefit of check for the A and the eight years runs from August 22nd of 2022, the date of endorsement of the plan, the definitive plan for eight years thereafter to August of 2030. So we are very much active in trying to evaluate all opportunities and we still have quite a bit of permitting to do. With respect to 420 and 430 Bedford, with respect to 17 Hartwell, the same situation holds true. We filed a preliminary in October of 2021, followed within the seven month period with the definitive plan. We went through the whole process with the board previously and you issued a certificate of action and endorsed the definitive plan and also in August of 2022, we have an eight years zoning freeze. We are in the process now of developing a housing program, multi-family housing program under and pursuant to the MBTA, it's called the MBTA mandated zoning, which town meeting adopted. And we have, we have had several meetings with the planning director and her team. And we expect to have a DRT meeting in June, but we are still in the process of planning. There's a lot of permitting left to do and simply put, what we're asking in both cases is for the board to extend the two-year completion requirement in section 6.3B for an additional two years to give us the opportunity to continue our planning at 420, 30 Bedford Street and our same type of planning, but on a different scale at 17 Hartwell Avenue. So I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. DeAngelis. Ms. McCabe, are there any staff comments?
I don't have any concerns with this request.
Good, thank you. To the board, any board comments or questions?
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You may have frozen for a moment, Mr. DeAngelis, but we did hear your whole excellent. Any board comments or questions? Seeing none, we will take up 17 Hartwell at first. Mr. Creach, I would look to you for a motion.
I move to approve the request to modify condition 20 of the planning board's 2022 definitive subdivision approval for 17 Hartwell Ave to extend the completion date for two more years from date of endorsement to August 26th, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Creach. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So we will go around the board. Mr. Creach?
Yes.
Mr. Hornick?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
An I'm a yes. That passes unanimously, five to zero. Moving on to 420, 440 Bedford Street. Mr. Creach, I would look to you for a motion.
This is 410, 420, I believe.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at novice.
No, no, we're all looking at the same thing, but it's 410, 420. 440 is Tremor Co.
Okay.
420, 430.
420, 430.
Okay, that's the final answer. Okay. I move to approve the request to modify condition 2022 of the planning board's 2022 definitive subdivision approval for 420, 430 Bedford Street to extend the completion date for two more years from the date of endorsement from August 3rd, 2024 to August 3rd, 2026.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. We'll go around the board. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Creach?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Hornick?
Yes.
An I'm a yes. That passes unanimously, five to nothing. Thank you, Mr. DeAngelis.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to our third item, 5 and 7 Piper Road. This is a public hearing. Will the applicant team please raise their hand so that we know where you are and we can unmute you?
I think everyone from the applicant's team is a cohort, so they should be able to unmute and turn on their camera.
So as a reminder, if you could please just identify yourself and your role on the team and the floor is yours.
That's great. Thank you, Michael. My name is Phil Porter and I'm sitting in the room with Dan Riggs from Embark. We also have D'Artagnan Brown, principal of Embark with us, and Nick Campanelli from MDLA Landscape Architect, as well as Michael Novak from Patriot Engineering.
Good evening, all.
Nice to see you all. Thanks for the time.
Yeah, so thank you to the planning board and to Adam McCabe and her team in the planning department for the opportunity to present this project in this forum. We, my name is Phil Porter. I'm the owner of 5 and 7 Piper Road and I'm the applicant for this particular project. The architect team is Embark in a Boston, Massachusetts based firm. Dan Riggs and D'Artagnan Brown are here, as I mentioned, as well as a landscape architect and our engineer. We're very excited about this project. It is in keeping with the MBTA initiative that the town meeting passed in 2023. This is an opportunity for the community of Lexington to, as an early adopter of this state mandate, to see through a vision that I think is very much in keeping with the Lexington community. As a Lexington community member since 2009, I am very pleased to be a part of this team and initiate this project. We feel that this is a really good representation of what the language of the MBTA zoning bylaw supports and asks for, and we're very proud of this project. I'd like to turn it over to Dan Riggs, who is going to share a slideshow with, you know, words, of course, to go along with it. Sort of does an overall introduction to the project. We recognize that a lot of this material has already been viewed by the planning board and the planning director and team, but we felt that it would be an appropriate introduction to the project. So, Dan?
Thanks, Phil. Sorry, I was trying to zoom the camera and I'm just going to move forward a little bit here. But yeah, we're excited. Again, I'm Dan Riggs with Embark Project Architects and we're excited to show you the details of the proposal and get feedback. So we'll move pretty quickly through this and make sure to open up time for questions at the end. So just to start, project overview, it's obviously 57 Piper Road is the address. This is a new construction project, three-story residential building over a basement podium with parking. It consists of 59 residential condominium units, 98 garage parking spaces, again, below the three-story residential structure, as well as three aggregate surface spaces, so total of 101 spaces. We also have 89 resident bicycle parking spaces, six visitor parking spaces, so fully complying with the MBTA zoning that's been laid out for the site. This is in the Village Overlay District, the VA Overlay District, and the underlying zoning district is RO and the project is to be as of right within the parameters of that Village Overlay District. The site itself is 1.65 acres. Building height is 39 foot eight, so again, complying with the 40 foot that's allowed by the Village Overlay zoning district. With the project, we're also including eight units that are designated as affordable and we're incorporating a number of sustainability features within the project. We'll be complying with the Opt-In Stretch Code and we'll be designing to passive house standards. Just starting by zooming way up for the context of the site, it's in southeastern Lexington and along bus route A1, A2 of the Lexpress. Zooming in a little bit more, we're surrounded by great sort of supportive uses and features around the site, again, including the Lexpress bus route, but a number of hospitals, schools and open spaces that help support the use of this residential project. The site area, again, you can see here it's 1.65 acres. Piper Road extends off of Waltham Street and just to the north of our site is Concord Turnpike Route 2. And to the south of our site, we have Minuteman Apartment Complex and to the east, the Temple Amuna. Again, we're within the Village Overlay zoning district, so we're complying with the various setback, setback distances that are required for that, as well as the height and the permitted use of a residential use. This is an aerial of the site as it exists now. We'll get into more detail with this in a moment, but as you can see, it's currently a fairly clear-cut site and this is how it has been since Phil purchased the property. Doing a quick kind of tour around the site, looking at some of the existing features. So, you know, some of the approach along Piper Road here, the view back towards, on Piper Road, back towards Waltham Street. From the site, again, you can see it's largely cut, clear-cut as it is now. This is the existing entryway, which will be more or less maintaining that same position, but revising that curb cut, so it is entirely within our property right now. It extends out and uses some of the temple's land, so we'll be revising that, so it's entirely within our property. As you can see here, the part of our proposal is to also sort of reconstitute some of this existing sidewalk network that you can see here and improve that infrastructure. With that, I'll pass it over to Mike Novak from Patriot Engineering to go through some of the initial site analysis and then his civil engineering kind of back.
All right, thanks, Dan. Mike Novak from Patriot Engineering, make sure everyone can hear me. Please let me know if you can't. Dan kind of jumped into the existing conditions. This is just a site analysis plan that the board typically expects to see. Again, this site has been disturbed. This site sat as two single-family dwellings, I think, pre, probably 2018 or so. And then it was started at construction, the existing houses were demolished. There was a lot of earthwork done. Not really sure what happened, but the project stalled. Phil, Phil became the owner. So as you saw from those aerials, this site has been heavily disturbed and most of the green that you saw is just weed ground cover. Certainly let the landscape architects give you more detail, but the trees around the perimeter at best. And if we move on this plan from left to right, the left-hand side being Piper Road, there's certainly some ledge outcrops, as can be seen from the street and on-site. And as you move from left to right, those ledge outcrops disappear underground and the site becomes just an unidulated topo with a high point to the top of the page with the gravel parking area and then ragged slopes from top to bottom, moving down to a low point just north of the metal sex apartment buildings. So as I said, this was previously disturbed. There's definitely still some debris out there. There's been a lot of earthwork done, some filling. We've done some initial test pits to get an idea of where the ledge meets it, where the water sits and the soil makeup. I'll get into that in a minute, a little bit more. So I think that's, I'm sorry, excuse me, the highlighted slopes are as required in terms of 15%, 20%. That middle piece is kind of a stockpile area that's just been overgrown. So we toppled it and called it a steep slope, but it's really just a debris pile that's sat for a few years. If you could go to the next slide, Dan? And we'll get into the layout of the.
Mike, I'm just going to skip forward a few slides and kind of set you up here. So just the site design. So again, it's three stories of residential over a single basement podium. So it's one connected structure and it's expressed above ground as two sort of masses of the residential buildings. So you can see here, those two in white, those two residential masses of the three-story condominium units here that are united by a central courtyard in the middle of those two masses. And the podium extends between those two buildings and connects them below ground. At the north of the site, again, that existing curb cut here, we're reconstituting that so that it's entirely within our property. And that will become the loading and drop-off sort of visitor access to the site. And it's also where trash and trash loading will be removed from the site. Just to the west of that on Piper Road is our main vehicle entry to the project, which will take you down to that below-grade podium structure. And Nick from MDLA will go through the site plan in a lot more detail. But just to lay out the main kind of pieces here, we have the two residential masses that are connected by that below-grade structure. So with that, I'll pass it back over to Mike so you can go through this section.
Yeah, I think you can just leave it there, Dan. Well, it doesn't matter. So this, this is just the bones of the civil engineering plan, essentially. The hatched large areas of the subsurface drainage. As you can see, and as Dan just explained, we're utilizing pretty much most of the site for building and in common areas. So we fit this in best we could. One of, a couple of points that I just wanted to point to hit with the, with the board is that we did receive the peer review and the staff comments are welcomed and thorough as always. What we've done between receiving that and the meeting, just for the board to understand our motivation, we've already gone back out and done additional soil testing to establish groundwater soil types and more ledge mapping as part of the quest through the peer review. Also, we've initiated geotechnical services too. So when we, when we update our information, you'll see that. With that said, I feel as though we can address all of the comments that we've received. I don't see anything that gives us any concern at this point. We do have a lot of work to do, but I feel like we can get there. I think it'd be best to just let this presentation finish and I'll answer any specific questions that the board may have. So Dan, if you want to.
Yeah, appreciate that, Mike. That's great. We'll pass it over to Nick from MDLA to run through the landscape design and give the more details about the site plan itself.
Thanks, Dan. Just want to make sure everybody can hear me, correct?
Yep.
All right. For the record, once again, my name's Nick Campanelli with MDLA. I'd like to start on the streetscape on Piper Road and not to reiterate what Dan has already mentioned, but we do have two curb cuts, one new, one existing. Again, that southern curb cut is a new garage access. The northernmost would be utilizing an existing curb cut for a formal drop-off with free ADA spaces and access to the dumpster enclosures as well as emergency access pull-off. The streetscape, as Dan, again, well, there's a little bit of repeat, but we're providing a new sidewalk along Piper Road that extends the full length of the property. And again, kind of reharking back to the existing images before, the current slopes between Piper Road and the property are currently overgrown with brush vines, a lot of invasives. The goal really is to clean those up, plant new trees, expose the existing ledge, really to emphasize and kind of, you know, embellish and really play off the existing subgrade materials that we think could bring a unique character to the entry to the property, the very first experience. The courtyards, as you move into the space, the courtyards between the two buildings, the two podiums, as Dan mentioned earlier, really divided into two rooms. The first is more of an entry space that takes you to the two front doors, west and east. And then as you move further into the space, it becomes more of a private space for the community itself, where we have a pergola, grill counter, fire table, benches tucked in, the raised planters, et cetera. So again, moving from a more public, open space where the entry is back to a more private, more intimate space that's on structure with a parking garage below. Dan, I know if you can highlight the line where we differentiate between the structure below and on grade. So everything north of that line is on grade and everything south is on structure, just to give you a sense of what we're working with below grade. The buffers for the property, we'll start on the south portion of the property. We're looking to implement a formal evergreen row to separate and create privacy between our property and the Minuteman Apartments. We have two existing retaining walls, one that wraps the southeast corner of the property up along the east. The proposed grading is really meant to allow those existing walls to remain. We're really not looking to modify any sort of, any of these walls that really bridge the property line. And lastly, I do want to touch on the lighting. We have three different types of fixtures for the property. Pull fixtures along the main vehicular access drives, pedestrian scale pull or light ballards along the main pathways and wall pack lighting at the egress and main entries for the buildings. Trees and shrubs, generally, we want to be native with those and we're going to adhere to the Lexington suggested tree list. So with that, Dan, if you could go to the next page quickly, we'll just touch on some of the character photos, just to give you a sense for the space. Again, top left, this should just give you a sense of some of the character we're looking to create with the property. Using, you know, ashlar, stone walls, raised planters to find space, soft materials, wood tops, precast gray, concrete materials for the ground plan to suggest more natural colors that could play off the architecture itself. And with that, I think we're turning it back to Dan to conclude the presentation.
Appreciate that, Nick. So I'll just skip through this slide quickly since we touched on it before. With our architecture for the site, we're also including, I think, one thing that's important to note here, all the mechanical for the project will be centered on the roof structure and kept off of grade and within the building rooftop itself and will be screened from view and to help with acoustics. And we'll also have some small private roof decks at the top of the building as well. I think Nick touched on this as well, but there's a small playground that's incorporated as part of the site design as well to the west here. To the north, you can just note these two transformer locations that we're holding adjacent to where that trash pickup area will be. I'm happy to answer any other questions about, about the site as well as we go through. As, as Mike mentioned, there's a, there's a dip within the topography of the existing site. So as I mentioned, there's a connected podium that holds the garage parking for the project that takes advantage of that dip in topography. And you can get a sense of, you know, of this from this drawing, just essentially the bottom of this is that is flush with the grade sort of to the south of the site and that topography continues rising up, which allows us to really bring that parking out of view from the surrounding areas and incorporate it below the level of the residential, so it's fully underground essentially for the majority of the site. To accomplish the 98 spaces that we're, that we have within the garage itself, we're utilizing a series of shuffle parking systems as well as some surface parking within the project itself. So a number of these have sort of a double level shuffle parking system that is semi-automated and enclosed from the garage itself. So it's a, it's a great experience for the residents, be able to easily retrieve vehicles in a very space-efficient manner. Also, within the building, each of the residential masses that are expressed above have their own dedicated lobby that's connected by walking areas that are dedicated within the garage itself. And this is where also where trash storage, bicycle storage are all kept within the building for the vast majority of the time and trash is brought out when it's retrieved on those select days. Otherwise, it's entirely kept within the building itself. Just to quickly go through some of the floor plans. So on the first level, as Nick mentioned, we have the two dedicated masses, each have their own entry. That's, that's accessible from that sort of entry area of the courtyard design. So this western massing has its dedicated lobby entry here. The eastern massing has its dedicated lobby entry here. And each side would have its own amenity spaces that would complement each other and open into that central courtyard to really help embellish that area and create a kind of continuous common space for the project. We have a variety of different unit types here. You can see blocked out within the diagram itself. So that includes 44% of those or 26 are one beds. 44% are two beds as well, and we have just under 12% three beds of sort of seven in total throughout the project. And those essentially stack as we go to the second level. Within the corridors, we also have storage areas for residents and trash that stacks down to the parking level. And when we get to the third floor, we really created a series of setbacks to help kind of adjust the massing at the top of the building, create views, as well as to create dedicated open spaces for the residents themselves. For some of the massing and design moves, really influenced by the history of mid-century modern architecture that exists in Lexington and at one point existed on this site, as well as some of the materials of the existing natural vegetation and rock outcroppings on the site. Some of the other design features that we've sort of built into the project are, as I mentioned before, screening for the mechanical equipment on the top of the roof and making that visually and acoustically separate from the surrounding community. Incorporating generous setbacks at the top of the building, both to give it an aesthetic quality that is really interesting, compelling from different angles on the site, but also to create these great dedicated private amenity court, private unit outdoor spaces and terraces. We'll also be incorporating high-efficiency building envelope with the project. Again, it's passive house design standard, so it'll be a really great sort of thermal comfort within the units themselves. And it'll help save on those resident bills. Throughout the site, as Nick mentioned, new landscape plantings and tree plantings throughout the site. We'll also have the building be fully accessible back to that sidewalk network that we'll be sort of reconstituting. And again, the parking will be hidden from view by that landscape amenity courtyard. Some of the elevations from the project, so again, looking at some of the materials here and the way that we've used the architecture to help create some of those balcony moments and terrace moments. We have a number of materials in the project. Some of those are a high-density fiber cement plank as well as vertical wood plank siding that will be stained and sealed. And showing some detail here, which we'll continue to provide more detail of, but some of the wayfinding throughout the site would make it clear where entries are, where bicycle parking is, vehicle parking and sort of mail and all of the other features that go into a residential living project. And we'll take a quick tour around the project. So starting on Piper Road with the approach from the west. You can see here some of that playground area and the garage entry, as well as the freshly cleaned up and replanted area along the edge of the site. Continuing along, looking at that ramp down again to the below-grade parking area that's tucked within the topography of the site. This is the main sort of entry point and that entry courtyard that Nick spoke about. So again, we have our sort of entry signage here and you can see the two distinct masses and the each other entry that is really playing off of that central entrance point to the site. Moving into the site, so this is our view from that entry courtyard, looking into the different rooms of that courtyard space within the, within the project. And you can get a sense of the relative scale and height is pretty comparable to the condos that are sort of to the south of us, as well as some of the landscape buffer that we'll be creating between our project and that surrounding butter. Looking back at this western massing here, so again, by separating the buildings into the two separate masses above that parking structure, we're able to sort of mitigate the scale of the building and create these more intimate moments and intimate entry moments that really help to, to. and create these more intimate moments and intimate entry moments that really help to display the residential character of the building itself. And lastly, looking at that kind of most intimate connected of the shared common spaces on the outdoors. And really excited about the potential for this to be able to spill into the interior amenity area and have those two play off of each other and create this really incredible sort of centered shared amenity space within the project. So that's it for our main presentation. Really appreciate your time again. And we'd love to open it up to any questions or comments from the group.
Thank you very much. With that, we will go over to our peer reviewer. Mr. Barrett, you should be able to unmute yourself at this point and run through your Bartlett, I'm sorry. Sorry, you weren't, your name was not on my initial screen. My apology.
No worries. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, we have submitted our peer review memorandum. It's got a total of ninety-one comments. I'm not going to go over all those comments. Most of them are really things that the engineer, patron engineering should be able to respond to correctly. There are some data gaps in the submittals that we pointed out, some missing information. Or for example, tributary area plans, we don't have any. We need to know existing drainage patterns and how that fits with their model and then the post development drainage patterns. They have a lovely courtyard shown on the building between the buildings, but I don't see any drainage facilities for the courtyard. It's totally absent. So things like that, things that they can correct, things that are very correctable. Some of the site test information that we first received was really quite inadequate. They then proceeded to do some more test pits. And I did hear their engineer indicated that there's some more testing will be done, which is encouraging because from our inspection of the site and our understanding of the red, the rock and ledge outcrops that are present. And then test pits. For example, one of the underground infiltration systems, a test pit shows rock is preventing that system from being feasible. There's also rock up at the north end of the courtyard that could be problematic for an infiltration system they're proposing. If I could back up a minute, they're proposing to deal with their increased impervious area. Stormwater management for that increased impervious area through subsurface infiltration systems. There are four of them they're proposing. One is a large one under the courtyard. One is a small, narrow one at the south side of the building. And then two others are in the southeast corner, off the southeast corner of the building. So there's some concerns about the rock. We can't have rock in the presence of these infiltration systems, certainly. You need to have a minimum of four foot of separation between rock and/or high groundwater. You can't have either of those conditions. So there's some basic feasibility issues that they need to address for management of stormwater through additional testing. And then the rock is problematic potentially for construction of the foundation, the underground parking. And then there are two levels of underground parking. I don't even now fully understand the second level. I believe it's got to do with their parking stacker. Where they can lower a car, raise a car up and there's mechanism below, or are they lowering the car down below? I'm not quite sure about that.
Mr. Bartlett, if you could pause for just a moment, I've got a question here from a planning board member that I just need to make sure is addressed. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, I was wondering if he could turn his camera on so he could, we could see what he's actually talking about.
Well, I can't seem to start my video, but I can't seem to, oh, there it is. Can you see me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, on this, using this figure, there's some infiltration. Can you see this?
Yes, we see the civil engineering plan right up.
Yeah, there's some infiltration areas on the south of this building. And then you can see that there's two areas in blue here to the southeast corner. You see those?
Yes.
Very large infiltration system in blue in the middle of the courtyard toward the north end of the site. It projects under the driveway, it also projects under the courtyard. And then this small drainage system here, it's more toward the southwest corner, but on the south side of the building, it's a blue strip. You can just maybe make it out on that left side of the building, yes. So this concerns about the presence of rock in these areas. There's also, I noticed the landscaping, I know it's worthy that they want to put landscape screening on the south side. But they really shouldn't be putting plantings over those infiltration systems, not advisable. There's also some plantings proposed up in the large courtyard northerly end that would be trees even planted above that infiltration system. And they may want to reconsider that or come up with a strategy to to deal with that because root intrusion into an infiltration system can cause it to fail. But the main, one of the big recommendations we had within our report was we recommend doing a geotech engineer being hired and that they do probing or borings or probing or both. Do cross sections of the rock from east to west and north to south. So we can see they can see what they're up against in terms of rock removal, if any, or how much. I'm quite sure there's going to be rock removal. Question is how much? And as to the feasibility of getting that opened up so they can put in those fairly large foundations with underground parking. There's also on the, if I'm going too fast, let me know. I'm just highlighting some of the key things here. On the infiltration systems, there's no provision for overflow of these systems. We, for example, on the large system to the north, we looked at the hundred-year storm projection on their model. And it shows that the system will flood back out to the catch basins at the entryway. Literally flooding out, causing flooding at the entryway. And of course, that's not acceptable. We strongly recommend in our report that these infiltration systems are provided with overflow pipes or collector that can then carry that excess stormwater that's not manageable on site up to a drainage system that we know exists in Piper Road. And that would require approval from, of course, the DPW. It would require Conservation Commission approval, we understand as well. So I believe those are the main issues. There was a sewer, as you know, a sewer proposed that goes down Piper Road and then it goes down to Waltham Streets, I believe. And, you know, it's a conceptual design that they provided to you. It's nowhere near what's needed, of course, for getting permitting. Getting not only town approval, but we believe that that stretch of streets that Piper connects to, and I believe it's Waltham. Did I get that right, Abigail?
Yes, you do. That's Waltham Street.
Waltham. I believe that's a state right-of-way, Mass DOT. And DOT is very particular about being told what's going on. They want to chime in on designs way in advance. And they need to look at detailed plan and profile drawings and designs so that they can accept the installation of that utility in their right-of-way. And we understand too, the town will want people along that stretch to be able to connect to that sewer. So it's a whole timing question that I'll leave up to Abigail and her team, but you know, I think it's going to be a matter of making sure that the town is fully on board with it, that it's feasible. And adding on top of all that, that Mass DOT is on board and accepts the design. Because, and they'll probably want full with repavement of the street as well. The other issue is the MWRA, and I will leave that up to the town's engineer. MWRA may or may not want to know about this contributing flow. And if they're connecting to an MWRA sewer in Concord Street, I just don't know. That's something that I'll leave to the town engineer. But I'm just highlighting that MWRA may have some need for information and I pointed that out in my memo. So I believe those are the highlights. In terms of water supply, they really should get a pressure test done out on hydrant in Piper Road and show that there's adequate water supply and pressure to supply this project.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's basically, I'm here to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, board members, Abigail.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Appreciate your feedback. With that, Mr. McCabe, on to any staff comments?
Sure, thank you. So this is your first major site plan review under the new village overlay district that was adopted one year ago at town meeting. There was a memo from Planner Ms. McNamara in your packet that went to the planning board last week and the applicant also received a copy. That memo is also pretty thorough. Same with the peer reviews memo. So you know, after, you know, after tonight's hearing, I'd recommend the planning board, you know, after tonight, continue the hearing out a little bit to allow time for the applicant to respond to comments in our staff memo as well as the peer reviewer comments and any comments that come tonight. So we request some revised plans. We, the, the project does appear to comply with zoning and the setbacks, but we asked for those setbacks, the minimum yard setbacks to be shown on the plan. The fire department also had some concerns about turning the fire truck around in that little turnaround area and they wanted to make sure that they had full access in between the two buildings. So after tonight, I'd recommend the applicant connect again with the fire department to make sure they have the information that they have and see if there's any adjustments that need to be made for fire department access. We also asked for more information on the car shuffling stacking system in the parking garage. We recommended some, as the applicant mentioned, some changes in the plant materials to make sure they're all native species that are on the planning board approved planting list. We had some questions on the lighting and we just want to make sure too that all the lighting should be dark sky compliant. It should be fully shielded with cutoff lights directed downward. I think there may have been some, at least in some of these visuals in the parking garage entryway that were up uplighting, it should all be downlighting because we don't want light spilling onto any abutting properties or up into the sky. We want to, you know, light, light the project but not off-site. As the peer reviewer mentioned, this project does need sewer. So that is a separate permit with the town engineering and also needs state, you know, MassDOT approval for the sewer permit. That is a separate permit, but it, the applicant, we recommend the applicant develop those plans and begin working on that immediately because that could take time. It's sort of a separate permitting process, the sewer permit, but it can be, the sewer can connect from Concord to Waltham and down Piper Road. And the town does require the applicant to install the sewer. It should be to town standards. Allow the connections from any abutting properties. And Piper Road was repaved recently, so the Piper Road would need to be repaved curb to curb. But once completed, the town would then take over that sewer. The planning board did receive some written comments from neighbors and members of the public over the last few days. Those comments have been provided to the planning board members. Most of the concerns were regarding traffic and construction. There was a comment from the Bicycle Advisory Committee about, there is a asking about a path connection from this property and possibly along to Concord Street, if there could be a connection with the neighbors at the April Lane development to connect, provide an opportunity for connection up to Concord Street. And then there is, you know, something that came up with the Commission of Disabilities last night was to have an accessible, be an accessible parking space out front in that little courtyard area, one of the surface spaces. But essentially we have the memo tonight. So after tonight, I'd recommend giving the applicant some time to respond to the comments with revised material at a future meeting date. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. Mr. Bartlett, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Just an afterthought when Abigail was talking about the sewer. The underground parking will need a facility or they need to present a design for the management of what we call drag-in water. Water that collects in underground parking areas during wet weather or during winter. And any drainage in the underground parking needs to go through an oil and gas separator and then be connected to the sewer, not the storm drains. So that's an important feature that they have not provided any information on, but will need to be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. So I am, this is my first time being the chair, so I apologize for not necessarily describing to everyone what the process would be. So as we already saw, the applicant will speak first and then I would go to Mr. Bartlett or our peer reviewer, who was our peer reviewer in this case, and then go to Ms. McCabe for staff comments. After that, I will go to the board for any questions that they may have. After which we will go to a public comment session and then follow up with any sort of comments and follow-up questions from the board. At which point, after the public comments, I will also open it up to the applicant to respond to any questions that may have happened or any comments that they would like to respond to. So before we go into that, I do have one thing that I also forgot to do, which is I just need to disclose that I want to make everyone aware that I was actually formally employed by the architect of the, for the proposed project, Embarc. I have submitted the disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest paperwork to the town clerk. My former employment will not have any impact on me being able to perform my job as a planning board chair and I can remain fair in considering this project for the village overlay site plan review compliance. So with that, I will go to the board. Mr. Creach.
Thank you, Mr. Sean Barker. First, I have a number of comments, but I'll just go with a question right now. One of the residents at Three Piper Road, which was right next to the proposed play area for, is that building one on the right and building two on the left? Is that accurate or? Are you not doing, well, I'm talking about the building on the right as I face from Piper Road. And he, all the houses on Piper Road have septic systems. They have concrete septic tanks. And, and I believe they have some kind of leaching fields, which surprised me a little bit, but that's what it sounded like when I read Mr. Weisner's memo. But in particular, Mr. Weisner is concerned, very concerned about unfixable damage to his foundation, to his concrete septic tank, to his leaching field, perhaps to the groundwater, changes to the groundwater. And so my question for Mr. Bartlett, I guess, is this. You know, if you're blasting or hammering rock, rock against rock against concrete, I mean, isn't something going to break? And that's what, and Mr. Weisner, by the way, is pretty knowledgeable based on being the general contractor for the construction of this house. And that's what he's worried about. So my question is, can this be dealt with effectively without doing certain damage or, or high percentage chance of damage to his foundation and his septic system?
Well, first of all, it's a great question that the abud has raised and if he's a contractor, he has knowledge of it. He thinks it can go sideways. I will, I guess I'll answer it this way. The applicant needs to have a geotech, geotech or The, the applicant needs to have a geotech, geotech or geotechnical engineer uh, develop a plan for rock removal to begin with. How much rock has to come out and how much and what type of rock? Is it fragmented? Is it fractured? Is it competent rock, very difficult to remove? There's a lot of questions that only a geotechnical engineer with good site testing can answer. And once you have the answers to those questions, you have a, you have to develop a blasting plan if necessary. You may be, if it's incompetent rock, it's all fractured. You might be able to remove it just with some hammering and relatively low impact removal. But if it's fairly competent rock, then blasting is probably likely, especially if it's a large area. So then the question is, you develop a blasting plan and these people are expert at what they do. They should be able to protect his subsurface structures and they should be able to uh, obviously survey everything within the blasting zone or zone of influence prior to any blasting. So they have a record of conditions that if is, if there is any damage, they're then held responsible. So it's, this is not, uh, you know, they can't just jump out there and start doing this. There's a lot of preliminary work to be done. And to answer this abutters question, uh, it requires a geotechnical engineer and a blasting expert to, to provide input. And of course, I'm neither one of those, but I am a civil engineer who's worked with these people over the decades. And uh, I can tell you, it is achievable, but it has to be done with great caution.
Okay, I thank very much. And I, it hadn't occurred to me that when you blast in one area, you are creating a space for the next blast and so on. Okay. So that's, that's something where we will, as you said, we need more information on that.
No question. Yeah, all those condos of the south, all of those condos have concern, you know. They could have cracks in their walls or whatnot. It, it has to be done very carefully.
Okay, all right. So um, then uh, then we'll expect the applicant to come up with that, those details. And uh, I suppose some kind of an insurance plan. I'm not sure how that works. Um, so those, that's my big question, Mr. Sean Barker. I have comments. Um, and I don't know how you want to handle that. Do you want to wait for comments?
Yes, I was hoping to do uh, questions first, then go out to the public and um, allow the applicant to respond to any of our questions after that. And then we would uh, close with any sort of general comments that we have.
Okay, thank you. Well, my, mine are not general, but I'll, I'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Sean Barker. Um, for the applicant, um, I was wondering if you could explain your rationale for the 1.71 parking spaces uh, per unit. Um, I know um, the aim of the board is to minimize parking. I also saw a note, I think in the DRT memo, that the police department was suggesting two parking spaces uh, per unit. So there's uh, um, there is that uh, conflict there. And also, are you marketing, do you expect to market the property uh, with a parking space or spaces associated with units? Or could a potential buyer buy a unit and not purchase a parking space?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Mr. Peters. Phil Porter again. Uh, we are aware of the parking ratio and feel that it is in keeping with the uh, number of units that we are looking to develop in these two buildings, as well as taking into consideration um, any additional spaces that unit owners may be interested in. Uh, to answer your question, uh, we do not have a plan defined at this time for whether parking spots, additional parking spots would be able to be purchased by potential buyers. Um, is, is that helpful?
So I think based on what you're saying, you're implying that there's at least one parking space associated with each unit. Is that, my understanding, correct?
That is correct.
And then part of that number also includes, I'm sorry, jumping in, Dan raised from Embark, but part of that number also includes uh, six visitor parking spaces within the structure itself. Uh, as well as spaces for uh, staff and other visitors. So we're just trying to make sure there's no adverse impact on neighbors by having overflow and keeping that all contained within the site.
Thank you. And I think that was one of the concerns raised by uh, the police department and others was overflow parking into the street and other uh, other spaces. Um, thank you for that. Um, let's see, the, uh, so Mr. Creach brought up the blasting. Uh, have, have you uh, determined whether you in fact will need to be blasting? And um, I'll just say from my perspective, having been on the board with other projects, this is an area that invariably is a point where it, neighbors get, um, are concerned and rightly so about the impacts on their homes, their foundations, as well as uh, living with the noise and any dirt and dust kicked up. Town meeting revised the noise bylaw uh, at the spring town meeting. Uh, and I would hope that you've been paying attention to that as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Peters. Phil Porter again. Um, yes, we are aware of the revised uh, noise ordinance language, which was adopted by town meeting in 2024. Uh, we have a draft uh, construction mitigation plan, which has been uploaded uh, as part of our application. Uh, this will certainly be revised. Uh, certain, once, perhaps more, time that we get closer to the specifics of our construction plan. Um, we have engaged a geotech uh, engineer professional um, within the last few days uh, who's mobilizing onsite next week to start to begin uh, giving us more information. Uh, that was one of Mr. Bartlett's items um, in his peer review. And uh, the only way for me to answer your question more completely will be to uh, take that information that we get from geotech um, and have Mr. Novak work through that from an engineering standpoint, so that we can answer more specifically.
Thank you. And I think that's uh, that's it for me now. Thank you, Mr. Sean Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Uh, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. Uh, just to follow along with uh, Mr. Peters' questions about the um, parking spots, I was wondering if three um, EV spots would be enough, considering it is a growth industry? And with 98 spots, uh, would three on the top be enough uh, for future growth industry cars? Or are there any underground EV spots? I was wondering about that.
Uh, thank you for your question, um, Mrs. Thompson. This is Dark Tan from Embark. Uh, Mr. Chair, would you like us to answer that now or hold to the end?
You can answer that question right now.
Okay, great. So typically what we've done is we have the three EV spots outside. And then Dan, if you don't mind turning to the parking plan. Um, internally, all of the, any surface spaces that we have, we would um, allow for EV charging. And we've done it just by, you know, making sure that the transformer is sized correctly to bring power into the building. Uh, we've done a similar project in Waltham, which we're just wrapping up. Uh, occupancy is going to start soon, very similar setup where we worked. Uh, we have the same automated shuffle uh, car system. Um, and just to summarize that briefly, I can certainly go into more detail. It was new to the town. There was a lot of questions around, um, you know, how these functions, how they're maintained. We did in-depth reviews with the fire department, building commissioner. Um, we, we went through a whole bunch of design iterations with the um, parking company to provide dedicated uh, fire sprinkler heads for each location within the system. And then the ability to uh, future-proof uh, the systems to allow for EV charging down the road. So there's a, a lot of flexibility that's planned for. Um, we're well aware that uh, you know, automotive uh, uh, systems are changing and advancing. Um, but we'll certainly plan for that. And then we'll um, at the next hearing, have a lot more information around the automated parking as well.
That would be great to see that the next meeting because I'm not as familiar as you are with the parking. So I'd like to learn a little bit more about that.
Definitely. We'll have a, a great section on that.
Okay, super. Uh, and on, if you could go to the, the floor plan slide. I, my next question was about the um, the uh, inclusionary units. Where would, you didn't indicate where they might be. And I'm hoping that they would be blended, you know, mixed in amongst all of the units so that there would be no specifically identifying of them.
Absolutely. Um, so as we move through the plan and kind of solidify towards the final design, we will prepare a um, selection overview slide that shows even distribution by type and size throughout the building. Um, we're just candidly not there yet until we, you know, know this building is kind of set. But we, we've done a lot of projects with an affordable component. You know, we'll go through the um, housing authority review on the designation location. Uh, just equal distribution by the ratio. So within the um, the eight number of units, you know, we'll, we'll break it up for the percentage type that's um, within the building.
And just to build on that, we had a great meeting with Liz Rust um, from the town as well, just to review that preliminary plan. And we'll be, as Dr. Tertini mentioned, we'll be including that information in our subsequent uh, filings.
Okay, thank you. And, and just one more. Would it be possible, I, I know this is not in your plan, but I was talking with someone about a, a moderate income as opposed to all-inclusionary. Would there be any opportunity to have a moderate unit be included in one of these um, condos? You don't have to answer now. I mean, maybe it might be something you might be able to go going forward.
It's a great question. I think it's something we should just study as a group. We've seen other towns look to adjust the AMI to really serve kind of that middle market. Um, in terms of, you know, pushing 120 to 150% AMI. You know, that could be a discussion point with Liz and a greater audience within the units that are designated. Can we look at bracketing some of the AMI designations to serve that middle, middle group?
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you so much. That's it for me for now.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Uh, Mr. Hornig.
Okay, a few questions. Um, I was looking for uh, our, our, we expect on the site construction plan a calculation of the amount of earth removed, brought in and remaining on the site. Do you have that yet? Will it be on the plan next time?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hornig. Phil Porter, that will be uh, able to be up. Mike, do you want to take that?
So, yeah, I think we're going to say the same thing. Uh, Mr. Hornig, we will certainly conclude that on the next round of plans. Um, not a problem.
Okay, thank you. And, and another groundwater issue. Uh, I did read the memo from the peer reviewer and I know you've got plenty of stormwater issues that you'll need to deal with uh, in, in the next round of plans. Uh, I didn't see anything addressing uh, section 4.5 of our bylaw about groundwater under basement slabs. So do you see any issue with complying with section 4.5? Which requires that a basement slab has to be at least two feet above uh, estimated seasonal high groundwater or you have to mitigate?
I don't see an issue with uh, meeting that standard. We're just not sure how it would meet just yet.
Okay, do you expect to be able to address that in the next round of plans?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Um, you're showing uh, your construction access immediately and then a landscape area eventually on your neighbor's property there. Do you have uh, an agreement, at least in principle, with, with Temple Amuna for both construction access across their property and the landscaping in the future?
Well, the construction access will probably just go ahead and revise that to move off in terms of the future. I would put that back to Phil. I know he's had discussions, but I don't know where the if or where the agreement stands.
Yeah, Mr. Hornig, Phil Porter, uh, I've been in contact with Temple Amuna, uh, met on site uh, with representative from the temple. Um, and have uh, responding to a request of the temple to have um, some planting materials uh, replaced from what was removed prior to my involvement in the property. Um, and I have assured the representatives from the temple that we are more than happy to work with them on a planting plan uh, which would create or enhance the buffer between their property and our property. Um, so uh, a long way of saying that um, we're happy to collaborate with them as a neighbor um, and be neighborly so that we uh, can help achieve whatever their goals are and also uh, put some more trees on the site.
Okay, actually, my concern wasn't so much that as, uh, you need that, I suspect you need that for your sightlines. And I, I just want to make sure we're going to be able to get the sightlines we need. You know, we have enough of an agreement about how that's area is landscaped, that you get the sightlines you need.
We'll, I'm sorry, Phil. Uh, go ahead. We'll make sure that we, we'll make sure that we show the sightlines. And if there's any, um, you know, any conflicts, we'll certainly square those away, whether it be an agreement or a revised plan. Appreciate the comments.
Okay. Do you envision any difficulty getting a grant of location for your sewer line from either the town or from Mast dot?
Uh, from the town, I would say that I've had very preliminary discussions with the town engineer in terms of the um, approach and idea. His initial response, I don't want to call him out yet, but it was a phone call. So um, his initial response was, yeah, meet all our standards and we should, I don't see an issue right now. But obviously get the plans in front of me and more review. Uh, Mast dot, we have, we have established where the right of way is. We'll get that on the plan. Um, I don't foresee that being an issue because as of right now, it looks like the right of way passes over the top of Piper Road. It, it actually isn't on the Waltham Street Piper Road intersection. So if anywhere, we have to deal with it at the site immediately and then we're out of it. So long-winded answer, but no, I don't think we're going to have a major hurdle there. But it's Mast dot, so we'll have to get to the answer.
Well, okay, just wanted to be clarified then. If you could, could you bring up the Waltham Street sewer plan?
I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Or do you have, you don't have that? Okay.
I mean, I, if you could give me a minute, I can pull it up. But if you want to keep going.
I, I assume you need to, to run uh, run your sewer line down the Mast dot right of way, correct?
Uh, that, I got it. Dan, could you pull back to one of your old plans? I'll, I'll do my best to try to describe this. Um, I didn't have the Mast dot right of way, let plans pulled up in front of me, but uh, right there. So go back to the last one. Yeah, right there. So uh, the right of way, uh, Mr. Hornig, right of way for the Mast dot runs obviously parallel to Route 2. Um, it clips the, the northern part of this site of Piper Road running east to west as we look at this. So as we come off of the property and down Piper, we are not in the right. So yeah, right in that area, we have to, we have to lay it out, but visually it runs as, as the cursor is moving that.
Okay, I, I'm talking about the other one, the one from Piper Road to Concord Avenue.
Piper Road to Concord Avenue. Going north?
Going, well, from Piper Road going down, planned down, which is I guess south to Concord Avenue. That's a Mast dot right of way.
It is not.
Okay, the town thinks it is. And I mean, Ms. McCabe, do you have clarification on that?
Well, how about I work out clarification with the town engineer and we bring that to you.
Now, Waltham Street was relocated when Route 2 was widened. And I think that may be the, the reason it's a Mast dot right of way.
Understood. And then we're in the process of laying that out right now and getting that on the existing condition plan. So we'll have that nailed down.
Okay, I think it's going to be really important that we have, you know, a clear uh, ability to, we know, know we can build that sewer before we, we start construction on the buildings.
Understood.
Um, and this goes back to something Ms. Thompson said. Have you any, had any decisions with the Affordable Housing Trust? One of the things they're interested in doing is buying down affordability on units, either turning market rate units into subsidized units or increasing the affordability of subsidized units through payments.
Yes, Mr. Hornig, Phil Porter, um, I have had uh, a discussion, a Zoom call uh, with the representatives and uh, it is ongoing. Um, so if the, their request was Um, so if the, their request was uh was heard and we're working on responding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hornig. Uh, Mr. Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Schenbacher. Um, I have um. A question first for Ms. McCabe, and it goes to the comments that you reported from. The fire department and the access into the courtyard. If you could put up a, the figure showing the. Um, the sort of the act grade design plan in this, um, the courtyard between the two, two structures. That's fine. Yeah, when we were, when we did the site visit last week, it was explained that there, um. The driveway to the north, well, to the, I guess it's to the east, um. Is, you know, primarily used to access the, the um, sort of the infrastructure utilities at the end of that driveway and also be able to get a fire truck in. And back in and out, um, with sort of like a back in turnaround. Um, and I know that some of the comments, I think that came out of the peer review analysis were that obviously there was a, a, maybe the staff analysis was that there's a. Substantial load that needs to be carried on that courtyard, um, which ended up itself might not be a problem, but. Uh, Ms. McCabe, you indicated that the fire department seemed to want. Equipment to go all the way through that courtyard. Is that what you were saying?
Yes, or at least most of the way through, kind of up, um, in between the two buildings, the fire department. Um, so they would like to, you know, confirm that the fire truck could get down there if they needed to get in between the two buildings.
All the way to the, whatever that is, that the western side or the, I'll call it, on this planet, it's on the bottom of this, of the sketch. So the question I had was whether or not, number one, whether or not that. Might affect, significantly affect the site plan. With regard to that central corridor and whether or not it had to be redesigned to permit. Full vehicular movement in that area that might actually have a significant impact on the layout of the rest of the structure. So I just wanted to get a better idea of whether or not that. To be able to accommodate that need, whether it would might, might actually do serious. Have serious impacts on the, all of that amenity space in that courtyard. The, the, the more fundamental question I had, based on reviewing the um, Mr. Bartlett's report. And the town staff report were, as everybody else has noticed, the, the, the um. Geological conditions of the site are are quite challenging and. Uh, that runs directly not only to the impacts from blasting and site preparation, but also in stormwater management, which everyone's discussed up to this point. And on that point, plus the comment that the um, Mr. Bartlett made about really the. The recommendation that you not lay um, large planting trees right on the edge of the. Uh, infiltration structures that you end up with either. Not enough space for the infiltration structures or not enough space for the planting, which might have an impact on the. Overall building layout and footprint of the, of the structures themselves. And so from that perspective, I'm just wondering whether or not. It's a bit premature to get into the details of the site plan, at least the physical site plan, until we. Have confirmation that the stormwater management systems may not need to be substantially expanded or relocated. And and in turn, how that affects all of the screening and buffering that's going to be planned, um, which is significant along the way. Um, I I assume that there's a real possibility that there may be some significant changes if you've got to accommodate. A different configuration of stormwater management structures, uh, as well as either emergency access and other things like that. So. You know, I, it's just unclear, and I respect the fact that the applicant hasn't had a chance to fully digest. Uh, Mr. Bartlett's report and the staff report to, and they are yet to get any kind of significant reports back from their. Um, geologist and looking at the site uh from a lot of perspectives to understand, are we looking at something quite preliminary at this point? Or are we getting into the, or do we expect the the next plan to be? You know, the detailed plan, but basically substantially the same as what we're looking at now. That, that's just a question I have. Um, for staff and Mr. Bartlett and to the applicant. How much, how much um variability do we have to build into this initial hearing? To understand whether it's feasible to put those two buildings and the underground parking exactly where they're shown on this plan? So I don't know whether anybody has a, maybe Mr. Bartlett can sort of comment on that question.
Well, you you hit on some very key points, and I think you caught the crux of my comments. That I raised tonight was that the feasibility questions really should be answered first. Uh, in my opinion, they should be answered first because they're so fundamental. To everything else. Um, if you can't cite stormwater facilities on properly, either because of setbacks. Rock issues, um. Or, you know, plantings, you know, in conflict with plantings or access. Then you need to come up with other strategies that, you know, engineers are pretty clever and the architects and engineers probably can come up with solutions, but they really need to do that. Before you get all wrapped up in the details of the plantings. Or even the placement of the buildings. Um, you know, rock removal is is a big unknown right now. And so that's why we raised it. It's so fundamental that they really need to dig deep on that, no pun intended, and figure it out. Because if that's not figured out, then this building arrangement may not be feasible. We don't know yet. That's how, that's, that's how fundamental it is.
Right, I, I, one of the thing, one of the comments I think that I read in some of the letters were uh really noting that you've got. To be able to do, to walk, for any of the residents to walk around the title, this, the total perimeter of the site. It would mean walking through that sort of little dog park area down there, but you really do have. I would assume, given that the building is substantially covering the lot. Uh, relatively little open space, although I appreciate the amenities in the core courtyard. Um, that the building edge of the building, and we know this from the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. Um, really sit, allow the building to sit quite close to the property line. At the same time. You know, it's, it's going to be a very urban type feel because you're going to be very close to the property line, and if you ever. Want to use some of the other perimeter green space areas, they might be affected by. Either the the screening plan or or some of the other stormwater features that might need to be incorporated. So it's really more of a logistics question and timing question about, are we looking at something that may be just a little bit premature? Before we weigh in in any kind of detail about sort of the, 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 the details associated with the. Site plan and the orientation. Um, the other small question I had, which maybe I just misheard it, but. Um, I understood from the uh staff report that the um. Electric vehicle charging was going to be provided in the garage. I wasn't clear whether or not the. I was under the impression that the surface. Parking that's shown adjacent to the courtyard is really just pickup, drop off and maybe deliveries, but. But no visitors or guests would be parking in that area. I. I'm not sure Ms. Thompson or someone else might have mentioned, is there an EV charging? Station up in that upper level. I assume that it was all just in the garage. Is is that correct? Is is it just?
Yeah, I can. Dan, do you mind clarifying that? Because I think I misspoke. Um.
Yeah, absolutely. So that was part of the, the fire department memo as well, but we are, um, we are planning on there being five. Uh, EV charging stations within the basement level of the project, so we'll have five of them and and they'll be within one of these stacker uh shuffle systems. Uh, to include that and and we'll be coordinating that exact location as we continue to develop the project with fire department. Um, and it'll be close to this garage uh entry point.
But essentially, the, the courtyard parking or the entrance where the lobbies are would be limited to deliveries and pickups with like. Uber and Lyft, things like that.
Exactly. That's correct. It's, it's more like fifteen minute parking, just visitor drop off, you know, it's not meant to. Sit and and charge a car there. Um.
Right. Right, that's good. Okay, those, those are the sort of fundamental questions that I had. So thank you, Mr. Schenbacher.
Yeah, and and we look forward to it. We appreciate the peer review process, first of all, always makes projects better. So we look forward to responding to all these items. I think as a, as a project team, we do feel confident that this will be substantially the design that we go ahead with. Um, and we'll be continuing to prove uh that it, that it works. Um, just to hit on the, the fire access uh piece of that, and we'll be providing more detailed drawings of this. As we continue as well. Uh, but really, this whole uh central portion of the, of the courtyard has been designed for fire access. And turning, um, these, uh, the ground here is, is not above structure, though this would be. Structured soil and hardscape that would be able to support the weight of a fire truck. We'd also have a flush curb condition here, so you wouldn't have to traverse over any obstacles to enter that space and exit from that space. It would be a completely flush condition from the entry moment. And it's designed to be driven over in a straight path without any obstructions. Up to the point of um, of the garage structure below here in that dashed uh line. To be able to give full access through that site. So we, we are working to coordinate that further with the fire department and have a meeting that we're. Uh, looking forward to in the next week or so, um, just to kind of nail down our understanding and and their understanding of of that area. Uh, so we look forward to being able to answer that.
Yeah, and I think part of that also, Dan, just to add, addresses. Um, access to, to where that number one is on the page. But then reaches within the hose distance requirements. So from a ladder truck, you know, you have. Um, in other towns we've worked in, you have a hundred and fifty foot dimension, you have to be able to do. And then part of that backup that goes to the east above the number four. Is to get and we'll, we'll provide this maneuverability uh turning radius diagrams that just show that. Because we have to back up over, you know, but a set a hundred feet or so, whatever the, the town dictates, you have to provide a full. Reversing spot to then pull back out. So we're, we're fully aware of that. I think to your comment earlier, um, this is a little bit preliminary in nature to wrap our heads around. Major comments that are raised so that we can then come back. Provide, um, you know, appropriate follow up and just further, further detail and, you know, engineer out the, the site.
Thank you, uh, and thank you, Mr. Leon, for your comments. Um, so I am last. Um, and the nice thing about being last is that many of my questions have already been answered. Um, you've already answered my questions about which path you're going to take for compliance with the stretch code. Uh, you've answered my questions about the equipment on the roof, um, and screening. Uh, but one question I do have uh is regarding the trash. Um. I I'm a little bit unclear as to exactly what the process you are planning to uh use for the removal of trash from both of the. I'm sort of thinking of them as two different units. I understand that they're connected on the lower level, but could you just walk? Us through what that process is and um how you plan on dealing with that?
Sure thing. I think, Dan, if you don't mind, yeah, there you go. But it's not basic. Yeah, so the two buildings, um, you know, again, we're, we're calling it two buildings. It's really a single structure that spans the two buildings. Each, we'll call it the east and west buildings have. Um, trash compactor rooms that are serviced through uh trash chutes on each floor. What that does is every resident will be able to put um the refuse into there. It goes down into a trash compactor room, which the building management. Will manage and they're typically five yard barrels that they'll use when they get pulled, they push it aside, get the other. And then what we've designed here is separate of the passage. Passenger elevators that serve the residents, um, up in the upper north corner where the mouses, we have a separate. Um, service lift that will then take the um. Containers and bring them up for, for pickup by a trash, a, a management service that's separate. And and so that's all done, Mr. Chair, below the two buildings, collected to the north, brought up on a scheduled service plan and then. You know, either brought out to the street to, to take or, you know, that's. A trash management plan will be part of the kind of complete application. But from a function purpose. The goal is to, to basically collect everything up in that upper north corner, bring it out for the appropriate uh disposal.
Again, and that would apply for any recycling as well, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so separate trash, separate recycle.
Yep, thank you. Uh, and one follow, one final question, uh, is it the intent to have uh in-unit laundry for all of these? Uh, apartments or condos, excuse me?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I, this is just a sort of future comment, but you know, obviously you guys are very early on in the design standpoint, but just make sure that. All of your mechanical vents and, you know, laundry exhausts are all coordinated because you have a nice facade. I, I don't want you to wreck it with a whole bunch of stuff that comes in at the last moment. So that is, that, those are all the comments that I have for now. I have uh all my questions. I do have some comments that we'll, we'll get to later. So at this point, we will open up. The uh public comment session. Um, and what I'd like to remind everyone, public hearings are an opportunity for both the board and the public to thoroughly understand proposals, suggest improvements and advocate for or against it. The public hearing may be continued or may be closed at the end of this evening. Uh, comments during the public participation are limited to two minutes, and due to the number of people wishing to speak. Uh, or as anticipated, comments will be timed. At two minutes, the staff will ask the speaker to wrap up, and at two fifteen, the sound will be shut off. If the applicant wishes, they may respond to questions posed after public comments have been received. Um. And the public hearing uh is for five to seven uh Piper Road, uh, off topic, off topic comments will be abbreviated. Uh, in the interest of time, if you agree with the previous commenter, 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 please indicate that and kindly do not repeat those comments. The board especially welcomes written questions and comments at any time via the planning staff, planning office website. Either instead of or in addition to those made during public participation. Please use the Zoom and raise hand function and I will call on you. Please identify yourself and any relevant affiliations for the record. Thank you. Uh, Margaret Heights. Besides, you'll need to unmute yourself. I think for the moment, we'll come back to Ms. Heights in a moment. Uh, with that, uh, Lena Edinger.
Thank you. Um. Yes, my name is Lena Edinger. I'm president of Temple of Muna at nine Piper Road. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here on behalf of the community. Uh, we've got. Five hundred and thirty household member units. I'm here on the call with some board members as well as members of our community. And um, we um. We uh have some objections to the current proposed density of the uh plan. Um, and um, I would like to um. Call on um, a fellow board member, Alan Sherman, who is vice president of facilities. Um, to give the details of um our reasons for our objection. I was wondering if you would give permission for Alan Sherman to speak.
Yes, Ms., uh, Mr. Sherman. Uh, you're, you're still muted, Mr. Sherman.
I think you're saying you can't unmute.
Yeah, my, I, I wasn't able to find him on the list. One moment.
There you go.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Uh, sorry for the technical difficulty. Um. So as our president Lena Edinger mentioned, I just wanted to say that we're also joined by our senior rabbi, David Lerner. As well as about a dozen or so uh board members and other community members. We do have four. Specific objections to the proposed project, which I'd like to touch upon as a very uh busy. Uh, building located at the top of the road. Uh, the first I'd like to touch on is traffic and pedestrian safety. Uh, as has been spoken about, Piper Road is a twisting road, variable width road. Uh, under the current conditions, vehicles and pedestrians barely manage safe passage to and from Piper Road and the, and the temple. Employs traffic details during major events. We are very aware of this as a problem. And we, we believe it's inconceivable that during and after construction of the project, that vehicles will be able to safely enter and exit Piper Road. At this busy intersection of Wall fam street. Without major changes to Wall fam street and improvements to the Piper Road uh intersection. Uh, you've all spoken already about large emergency vehicles and trucks. We have some concerns about that as well. Uh, Piper Road dead ends at Temple of Muna and in our parking lot, and there's a persistent problem we already face. Around cars and trucks attempting to use the temple parking lot as a turnaround. This creates a pedestrian. Risk, a vehicle safety risk, uh, and a project of this intensity will almost certainly make this problem much worse. As these vehicles miss or can't negotiate the tight turns into the proposed project and have nowhere else to turn around other than our parking lot. So any proposed multifamily project should be required to provide easily accessible entrances and turnaround space in the property itself uh for a cul-de-sac. We're also aware that the project proposed lacks meaningful open space, and as a result, there's nowhere for children and adults to engage on site. And the Temple of Muna parking lot, as well as our grounds and our own. Uh, playground space cannot safely be used for that purpose. Uh, the second reason we want to touch upon an objection is security. Uh, we live sadly in a time when houses of worship have to worry about congregational security. We're very aware of this and that without dwelling on the details. we have a, what we call a security zone, and we can't safely function as an overflow parking lot or recreation area for the adjacent project. And the synagogue must always be accessible for emergency evacuation if required. The third objection is interruption of religious activities. The regular operation of the synagogue involves religious services, classes on multiple days each week. And the proposed project involves extensive removal of rock ledge, which, as we've spoken about, will require blasting and hammer removal of large amounts of rock from the site and from Piper Road for the sewer line. This is in addition to normal commercial construction activities and the operation of heavy equipment. And we would ask for a commitment from the developer to work with the temple to minimize the interruption of school and religious activities, most especially on Saturdays, holidays and funerals. In addition, since the synagogue sits on the same ledge outcropping as the proposed development, we request the developer prepare geological study and produce a plan to eliminate the risk of damage to the temple building as a result of ledge removal as well as water mitigation issues. And finally, we just want to point out that the temple parking lot is the site of a large community solar project, which we're very proud of. It covers most of our parking area with photovoltaic solar canopy, solar panels on canopies. So we would request a complete shadow survey to ensure that the proposed project will not impair the operation of the community solar project in any way. Thank you for the opportunity to share our comments on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. And with that, we'll go back to Margaret Heights.
Hello, I hope you can hear me now. I'm Margaret Heights. I live at 335 Merritt Road. I'm a member of the Housing Partnership Board. However, I'm just going to speak on my own question and not the board's. I wonder if you would consider, I would like you to consider decoupling the parking spaces from the cost of the condos themselves. We live in a time when it's important to not basically go to a default where everybody has a parking place. And, and many people are working from home these days, may not, and just like at our house, unfortunately, our house, our cars just sit there for much of the day and much of the week. And I'd like the development to consider alternate transit options, perhaps like are used at Brookhaven or other senior centers where residents can obviously go out, get off the property when they need to, but don't need to have a car to enable that all the time. So I think it's, I think you should entertain the idea of, of selling the condo and selling the parking spaces separately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heights. Pamela Lyons.
Hi, Pamela Lyons, 51 Grant Street, a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee. But speaking right now on my own behalf, I noted that the applicant mentioned that this development will get express service of Waltham Street. In fact, the location was noted on one of the slides, the slide, I think it said immediate vicinity. I would urge the applicant to provide a bus shelter at that location and also to use the same model as was recently installed in Depot Square, which is actually a rather nice looking bus shelter. This would provide a community amenity. It would be consistent with the intent and spirit of the MBTA Community Act and also a number of other comments that we've heard today. So again, I would urge, I guess, maybe the planning board to make it a condition or requirement that the applicant include a bus shelter on Waltham Street for the residents of this property and also as a community benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tamar and Chadi.
Well, they, okay, I guess we're on, hi, everybody. We live at eight Piper Road. Both of us are going to speak, but I think our biggest, one of the big concerns is the density of this.
My apologies. Can you just identify yourself for the record?
Oh, sorry. Tamar Fine and Shadi Alzalibi, we live at eight Piper Road.
Thank you.
We're concerned with the density of the project, 59 units, basically encompassing the same amount of space as our mine and my neighbor's yard at eight, 10, eight and 10 Piper Road. 59 seems quite large for the space. We're concerned about the disruption that's going to be happening on our small, quiet street for, for quite a long time. We're wondering how long will this project be lasting? We're concerned with the, you know, possibility of needing to blast, both as a disruption and also, as was stated earlier, concerns with foundation, disruption, cracks, and also concerns with property value a bit as far as having this bigger and dense set of units just right on our dead end street. If you didn't say anything else.
Yes, and I think, you know, while we appreciate the spirit of the, you know, project itself and the fact that we're trying to diversify, you know, the community of Lexington, which we are truly supportive of, we do have like these significant concerns about like, you know, the impact of this on the lives of our neighborhood as well. You know, like for a project that has 59 units on a very, very small amount of space, you know, very limited parking, the ratio is actually so small that, you know, not even sure, you know, if in a holiday or something, you know, 59 will be how many parking spots? And if the town would consider making sure that, you know, Piper Street would be like a no parking zone at any point in time? And because I'm really concerned, we are really concerned about the spillover of all those parking. I don't know if somebody comes to visit and those six parking visitors, parking spot are all like, you know, full. What happens next? Do they park on our driveway and the temple parking? So I think it would be imperative for us to understand that piece as well. And I think I also speak to the fact of the safety stuff and if there's any kind of an insurance plan, if something happens to our foundation, cracks in our basement, what happens next? And also importantly, understanding that the street is so tiny, that the amount of disruption, especially if there is these, you know, proposed sewer systems that are going to be laid down, how long this will take and how are we going to be accessing our properties during these amounts of, you know, constructions? And with this, we thank the board for listening to our concerns and appreciate the opportunity to place our inputs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tom Schipel.
Thank you, Tom Schipel, 18 Finney Road. I have two questions that are related and then some comments. Questions with respect to pedestrian circulation on the property. I was wondering if the access to the playground is just that one sidewalk shown coming in from the street sidewalk? Or if there's another way to get to the playground? And then also if there's pedestrian access behind the buildings on the south side for the full length of the property. It looked like there might be a stone dust path that goes about halfway, but I was wondering if it's possible, would it be possible for residents to basically circumnavigate the entire property, maybe just to go out and take a walk or whatnot? With respect to my comments, I know there's a lot of technical questions and details to work through, but I think there's a lot to like about this project. I, I find personally that the two buildings arrangement is quite attractive. And the step backs on the third floor, I think, really helped to soften the height of the building. The eight inclusionary units that the town will be getting is more than, I don't know how many years you have to go back to even get to eight units total that we've added. So this is a big step forward. The fact that the passive house standard is going to be followed, I think is really good. And then as a bonus, the applicant is a Lexington resident. So, you know, he has some, some stake in the game here and I, I really think that he's, you know, they're, they're putting forth a quality project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schipel. Rena Malazowski.
Yes, hi, it's Rena Malashevsky. Thank you. I am a resident at 310 Concord Ave. I have a couple of points, so I'm going to try and speak succinctly and briefly. I think many people in the neighborhood are concerned and we've heard a few folks tonight talking about their foundations and the physical impact of blasting plan for this proposal. In the words of the developer, or I believe someone affiliated with the developer said, can quote, "go sideways." Because of that, I would like to encourage that the planning board require the developer to post a sizable bond to rectify damages to any abutting properties and that the developer should pay upfront for any interested abutter to have a pre-inspection of all their foundations with photos, which could be used as evidence in the event conditions change or damaged during the process of blasting and/or construction for the duration of the project. I also noticed regarding the images that were shared for the proposed project, that there is a lack of evergreen trees. I see a lot of deciduous trees and yet none of the images that were provided are a winter view. We all know here in New England that six months of the year are trees that are deciduous, do not have any leaves and thus provide very little screening. So I'd like to see when this plan is brought forth again, I'd like to see a winter view. I think it would be helpful for all abutters and people in the neighborhood to see what this massive structure or two structures will look like in January when the deciduous trees and low growth floral plantings that were shown are no longer present. I also share a concern about the temple and the impact of this on the temple. Of course, during the holidays, we definitely see a large number of members of the temple coming, which is a wonderful part of our neighborhood and community. And about that being impacted as well as for guests of the residents of this development, where will they park if they're staying overnight? Where will they park if they're coming for a long stay for the holidays? Where will they stay if they're celebrating a birthday and they've invited many people and they have a rooftop deck and they want to have an evening party on the Fourth of July? Where will all these cars park for all of these guests that can come at any time for any resident that lives in the property? And then lastly, I'd like to say, but equally important, that there are concerns about the setbacks and water mitigation on the site. So I do look forward to all of these topics being addressed in the next presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malashevsky, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name. As you might imagine, I share a name that is also difficult to pronounce, so I understand. With that, Rabbi David Lerner.
I thank you for the opportunity, David Lerner, 5 Blossom Street in Lexington. I've lived there for 20 years and served as a senior rabbi at Temple La Muna for 20 years. I think there are some nice values that are being put forward in this proposal. And I want to thank the planning board for their amazing work and for their concern here, making sure that this all comes together. The problem with this proposal is that it's a great proposal, it's just for the wrong place. It really can't fit in this area and then can't fit in the street. I've gone up Piper Road by foot and by car about 10,000 times over the last, I added exactly 10,000 over the last 20 years. That's a joke. And it's a very narrow street. Anything happens, you can't get up. We had a truck that spilled fuel at the bottom of the street. It created a major, major problem for the synagogue. We have synagogue starts at 6:45 in the morning and we go till 9:30 almost every day. We have a preschool, which has tons of cars coming in and out for drop off. We're very concerned about the density of the project, the impact. As someone who lives in the area, I can tell you traffic is often backed up because on Concord Road, all the way back, it can be a half a mile when the weather's poor or when the Goddard School. I'd very much like you to look at the traffic and pick up at around 5:00 PM in the whole area. If you added a chain of many cars, it would be almost impossible. And lastly, I often see the kids at the play spilling over. And from a security point of view, it is really important for us to know who's in our area. And there is no other way to go. You'll have to walk up Piper Road or walk down Piper Road. There'll be no walk and to be out in the neighborhood. And just last before I'm out of time, I love the idea of connecting to public transportation, but as someone who's tried to do it, El Express comes very rarely. And to get to the middle of the town, to take the bus to Elway, it's two hours to get anywhere in Boston. It's not a viable public transportation route, I say sadly. I do better on my bike. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi Lerner. Jay Luker.
Hi, Jay Luker, precinct one town media member, 26 Ringe Avenue. And I want to make kind of a high level comment. I've heard a lot of concerns from folks and I, some of them are legit and some of them I would disagree with. But what I, what I want to point out is that if this was anything other than a multifamily development, we wouldn't be having this hearing at all. This could have been easily, you know, some number of large McMansions. There could have been an equal amount of ledge work, blasting, disruption from construction equipment. You know, same concerns about a winter view, but we don't, we don't subject multifamily homes to those kind of standards. We don't have public hearings. And the onus for satisfying these concerns is only ever put on multifamily housing. And that's why we have so little of it and why we have so many giant McMansions. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luker. Nihad Makari.
Hello, sir. My name is Nihad Makari. I live in 10 Piper Road. I do want to voice my same objections like many other neighbors like Tamar or the temple about the density of the, of the project. I do have personal concerns about, I agree about wrong location, very narrow street, one way, you know, two lanes. And actually, my daughters walk every day from 10 Piper Road driveway to the intersection of Waltham every day to get the bus, the school bus. And it's kind of hidden, curved. And I do have major concern on pedestrian safety. I heard there is 89 bike. So I assume that residents also be using bike. I do have concerns about accidents at the intersection between Waltham and, and Piper. And also I've heard that the playground would be in, just in front of the driveway for eight and 10 Piper Road. And there isn't, you know, if any kid between noise or safety, someone can get hurt very easily. I do have concerns that it's newly paved and then there is a sewage project. There is two, three years of construction. The disruption during three years, I would expect there will be a lot of accidents and losses that I doubt that a proper traffic study has been done. I know that this project has been added. It was not in the initial map or layout of the MBTA zone. Like I checked up to Jan 12th, this project was not in there and it was added later on, just before voting. So I think it was just added last minute in a very, you know, very tiny street and all in RO zone where all the houses have for privacy. And, and it was just added without, I think there is more intense impact on the community. I know that the houses, you know, there are four houses, but also the temple has a lot of visitors and members. So I'd like a sort of study on pedestrian safety, traffic.
Mr. Makari, you have gone over your time, so thank you very much. So with that, seeing no other hands raised from the public. The board usually takes a five-minute break after we've been going at this for about a couple hours. And we are at almost eight o'clock. It is currently 7:56, so the board will go into recess and will return at 8:01. Thank you. Thank you. Just waiting on Mr. Creach and Mr. Horning. Oh, there they are. Sorry, everything reset and I couldn't find you. Seeing that everyone is back. So at this point, we've closed public comments for this evening. That being said, if the applicant would like to respond to anything, either that the board had issued that you did not respond to earlier, or anything that came up during the public comments, you can do so now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, D'Artagnan Brown from Embarc, and I think both Phil and I are going to just address a couple of comments. I just wanted to start off by saying, you know, we appreciate everyone's time tonight. We know this is really the first time that we've been able to kind of broadly talk about the project. I think a lot of the comments are very clear in terms of how we solve for certain components. And we made a thorough list of that. You know, I would also like to say that, you know, we've practiced in other neighborhoods where we're, you know, very aware of the abutting context, just the sensitivity around being to adjacent homes, you know, that doesn't go lightly on us. I think, you know, we'll have the opportunity to really further robustly go through that. We, as mentioned, just finished a project in Wellesley, a sizable project, which was surrounded by a lot of single-family homes. We opened up a great line of communication with five direct families that represented something like 130 families within the neighborhood. What we ended up doing there was creating a very clear path of communication, kind of periodic updates. We met each homeowner on site. We offered the surveillance company to come in and photo documented each property so that we could make sure that there was record of conditions of every, everyone's home that was willing to participate in the area. And similar to, I think, what was mentioned before, you know, just to clarify, nothing that we said on our end from either myself, Phil, or or the team talked about it going sideways, that may, the comment may have come from a member of the board or peer reviewer, but on our end, you know, we will have a robust plan that deals with that. Just to set that tone. And I think, you know, that's a lot of follow-up we have to be able to address. And, you know, what we think we've done tonight is start off on a good foot that really shapes the project in compliance with what the zoning is for this overlay on the site. But we are mindful that we are creating a long-term project within a neighborhood. And so as we move through the process, we want to, you know, we appreciate all the feedback. We're not going to take it lightly. I think everything from engineering, how we deal with groundwater, how we map and locate the ledge in terms of putting together a robust plan on removal of ledge to create parking, you know, how we deal with parking, both from a technical, you know, fire department clearance to access to long-term maintenance, that's all stuff, you know, the team has done before. And so we'll be happy to share more information on that. And then in terms of the public realm mitigation around seasonal changes, you know, we will definitely enjoy doing some winter renderings. And I think we can go through a little bit more detail or blow up areas of the landscape plan because we do have quite a bit of evergreen planting that's called out in plan. We'll make sure it's reflected properly in rendering. And then I think things that we've also done is just look at pedestrian paths of travel, vehicular paths of travel. We are, as mentioned, proposing a full new sidewalk along the edge of the site on Piper Road to be able to separate pedestrian from the street, you know, doing that in a safe manner. And so we are, you know, well aware of the temple further up from us on Piper. And so we want to make sure anything we do, you know, doesn't jeopardize the safety of the neighborhood. And, you know, we'll continue to be diligent about, about a follow-up there. I think I hit everything, at least on my end. Phil, if you want to wrap it up on our end, would be awesome.
Yeah, thanks, D'Artagnan. And thank you again, members of the board and Abby McCabe Director for your willingness to accept this proposal. We're very excited about it. We continue to be very optimistic about our design, our engineering, our preparation for responses to the questions that we heard tonight. And thank you again for your time.
Ms. McCabe.
Thank you. I just want to respond to, expand on a little more to comments we heard too during the public comment period. The blasting, if there were to be any blasting, the blasting company is required to provide a pre-blasting survey inspection of all properties within 250 feet. So that is required, that they do need to offer that. So if there are any neighbors that are concerned, you know, we definitely recommend you should, you should do that. Talk to them. They do have experience. They perform these inspections because they also know, they don't want, they want to document what could happen during any blasting work. So we definitely would encourage that and that is required. It's regulated through state law, but the permit for the blasting, if that were necessary, that is through the local fire department. So that is available to any properties within 250 feet of the project site. And then there was a question about access to the playground. There is a interior connection, at least from the courtyard, there is a walkway out to the you know, interior, internal, so that the children don't have to just walk out on the street and across the garage. There is a connection from the courtyard area to the play area.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. With that, I will go back to the board for any comments. Mr. Horning.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to say, I really like the look of the project. I really especially like the unit mix. Some of our other projects have had only very large units. I'm glad that you've included a mix of unit sizes. I think that's very important for us to achieve our goals. And I hope that if the project evolves, has to evolve, you know, to a greater or lesser extent as a result of all of these engineering issues, that you can preserve that unit mix and the look of the project. That's all I have to say. Now, looking forward to hearing, seeing some new plans whenever consider this again. I think it's going to be necessary for us to continue this hearing. Well, I'm grateful.
Thank you, Mr. Horning. Mr. Creach.
Thank you, Mr. Schonbacher. So I am, I'm going to read a document I have. It's pros and cons. And I'll share this with Ms. McCabe after the meeting. But on the positive side, the overall design is very good. It's interesting. I like the asymmetrical nature of the site and the buildings with respect to each other, including the setbacks on the buildings. The varying, also positive, the varying mix of facade materials, colors, textures and vertical and horizontal orientation of materials. Screening of the mechanicals, the mix of the one and two and three-bedroom units. The inner courtyard space is very attractive and it looks like it will be a very successful area. Communicating location near Route 2, which of course needs either a bus or a car and the zipcar availability, I think, or the equivalent will be positive. So, you know, the project looks good and it's a great idea, but I want to also acknowledge that the the neighbors have some legitimate concerns. I have, I was aware of the temple's 550 or something like that community members. I was aware that at times on high holidays, there are 1,000 people there. I was aware that they're there from 9:30 in the morning until 10:00 at night, but it helps to hear it again. And I have to give it some more thought in terms of the implications. On the negative side, we have a lot of rock and ledge removal. Not the applicant's fault, but that's the way it is. It is a dense site coverage. The potential disruption on Piper Road, Waltham Street and Concord Ave are going to be difficult. There's a small amount of usable outdoor recreation space, as somebody already mentioned. And we had a chance to talk about this with the applicant at a site visit last week. And that playground area in the corner of the, I guess we're calling that the west building near Piper Road is 1,000 square feet. So that would translate to like 30 by 35. It's not much. And the other negative is the close proximity to the neighbors, but especially to 3 Piper Road. In any case, we do need a plan for the rock ledge removal. So that's already been discussed. So what I had also prepared is something that I'm going to ask you to do. And you're not going to like it. My intent is not to reduce the size of the project. It is to represent the best interests of the future residents who will live here and the current residents who already live here. So I'm going to do a share screen. I don't see a share screen, so hold on a second. Can I do a share screen, Ms. McCabe? I don't see it.
You should be able to.
Oh, yeah. I see it. Okay. So. And okay. So is this going to be too small? So this is the site. Is that all right for everybody or do I have to change the view?
Works for me.
Works. Okay, okay. So here's the site and I'm going to focus on this area here and this area over here. And I'm I'm doing two things here. I'm taking into consideration the close proximity of 3 Piper Road and also the small amount of open space. So here's a different view of it. And this is what I had in mind. So I'm suggesting that these go away and I'm not hung up on exactly how much of it goes away. And this is three apartments here, three units here. And it's two and a half units here, so the top floor will still have a unit. So what I had in mind initially was over here, this would be outdoor space where kids can kick a soccer ball and play outside. And that's the purpose. Again, my intent is not to reduce the size of the project, although certainly the residents, the neighbors think that's necessary. And what I'm asking you to do is to the applicant, to take this and give this some thought. And I think that this is a reasonable request. Let me say that. Based upon my input on the site layout. And I think I'll leave it at that. Again, I'm not hung up about these exact dimensions, but I'm looking for something like this. That's all I have, Mr. Schonbacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creach. Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Schonbacher. So not having had time to really think about
Thank you, Mr. Schonbacher. So not having had time to really think about Mr. Creech's suggestion, what did strike me about the the small amount of children's play area was that the site is so active that there there's really no space for something like a basketball hoop. So I think that there is something that should at least be considered with that that proposal. But what I wanted to address, and this certainly isn't an issue that this project would be creating, but it is certainly adding to, and that is the traffic safety conditions at Waltham Street and Piper Road, where there are no crosswalks. It looks like the nearest crosswalk that would provide any protection in crossing Waltham Street isn't until Concorde Ave, which is 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 something of a hike to get to. And if we're encouraging use of Lexpress and someone is trying to is being dropped off coming from Lexington Center and trying to cross Waltham Street, I think that would be a challenge. So it's not an issue created by this project, but it is an issue, I think, for future residents. And also, it sounds like with the the temple's usage is very active, and I would think for some of their uses as well, that's an intersection that could stand some review and moving up on the list of improvements. So I just ask the staff to know that if the project moves moves forward, a a plan for improvements at Waltham Street and Piper Road may well be something that the town should be considering because, as I say, it's not this project creating it. There are some traffic and pedestrian safety problems that exist. But this project to move forward would certainly be adding to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Schonbacher. Just a couple of thoughts. First of all, with respect to Mr. Creech's proposal and in light of everything we've heard tonight about some of the constraints or potential constraints posed by stormwater management, it may certainly be one outcome that the building changes its shape a little bit, which would give you a little bit more open space. You can certainly put little playgrounds and play areas and maybe even a basketball court in the area or on top of a groundwater recharge system, but it may be that you need to have more more green space around it to accommodate stormwater flows. On the topic of of the parking ratio, it seems like people are kind of all over the map on this from the police department. You know, very understandably concerned about the so-called so-called conditions that would result in overflow parking on Piper Lane or in any other properties. It seems to be that that's a very significant concern. This is one site where it seems to me that it is essential that there be enough visitor parking and and to be able to accommodate those kind of peak usage time periods so that you don't have any parking spilling over either on to Temple or Munus property or on the on the street generally. So, you know, I I appreciate the sort of the general theory of if we don't build it, they won't drive. But given the location and given the fact that you want to be able to accommodate the cars, this may be one of those situations where increasing the park parking ratio may may actually address more problems than theoretically, you know, encouraging people to have a car. And then finally, I think that from what I've heard tonight, I greatly sympathetic and appreciate the temple's concerns about security. And I would hope that the parties would be able to work out a an agreement that would accommodate the temple's security concerns, you know, at the same time. And I certainly, this is one of those sort of topics that will always come up. I'm sure that to some degree, the folks who live on Piper are are concerned about the fact that in peak usage, you may have a thousand vehicles going or five hundred vehicles trying to go to the go to the temple, and they're probably not happy about that. Similarly, I appreciate the temple's concern about wanting to be able to stay somewhat separated and and remove from, for security reasons, the sort of the high flow that you might envision here. But I'm hopeful that with the right design, buffering, landscaping, and other security, everybody's interest would be able to be protected. But I am looking forward to seeing what the next iteration of of design looks like after the geological assessment comes into play and and a more definitive stormwater management system with appropriate groundwater recharge capabilities is designed. It didn't seem to me that relying on the municipal stormwater system is really optimal for lots of reasons in this situation. I know it's possible, but I would hope that they'd be able to accommodate peak flow on the on the property, even if it does mean expanding the green space a bit to accommodate that that geological concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. I'm not gonna repeat a lot of the things that were said, but there is a long list of considerations for you, so I'm looking forward to your new iterations that includes, I I hope, a the results of a maybe discussions with the temple, because I think they had some very valid concerns, and I I I hope that, you know, you'll be able to talk with them and come up with some new plans. So open space is a key thing that I'm looking for. Again, working with the temple to come up with something and also to see if you can have a more a lengthy explanation of the parking situation and also a moderate housing if possible. So that's what I'm looking for, and I I really look forward to your new plans. I thought the design actually was very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So can we actually bring up the presentation for a moment and go to page thirteen? Which is just the overall plan? Perfect. So I'll I'll start with the comment that's the most painful one. So I really appreciate the sort of exterior space that's between you know, the east and the west, but I think this is a really strong part of the design. The the one, you know, sort of thing that sort of, you know, sort of bothers me about it is the fact that it is oriented more or less directly into the backyard of the condo buildings. And so I would like to see an option where that actually starts to get turned a little bit so that it's more over the parking lot and it's less about looking down into that the parking lot. I understand that there is a pergola at the end of this. I think that helps quite a bit. However, even in the rendering that you showed us, you can see the sort of roofs of those condos there. So I I think there's an opportunity to make a sort of bigger sort of spatial moment right there at the end of that that sort of exterior space that really is more, it's more directly communicating with the space of the adjacent lot than it is right now. Right now, it's it isn't really aligning in the way that it could. And I think it would be much stronger if it was. So that's the painful one. And then just for the design in general, one of the things that I really like about it, you know, Mr. Peters brought this up as well, you know, the idea that, or actually, I think it was a public comment, I can't recall. The sort of horizontality and of the design in general, I think that's a strength of what we're showing. It does not feel from the renderings that it is, you know, too tall for that site at all. And so I would encourage you to continue to reinforce that. You know, the verticals that you're showing right now are the same proportion as the horizontals. If those verticals were to get smaller, you're only going to reinforce the the horizontals more. Or and, you know, if we are, you know, trying to do this within the language of mid-century modern architecture, I would highly encourage you to, you know, sort of look at, not that Breuer, Marcel Breuer did anything in town to the best of my knowledge. But Marcel Breuer, particularly the houses that he did out in the Cape, there's a sort of strong connection with what you're doing right now with some of the the Cape houses that he did, which are really quite beautiful. And the next one, I I hate to sort of emphasize the sort of parking entry to the building. But right now, and you know, you did show the rendering, which helped a bit. It seems as if there's very little articulation of that moment where you're entering the parking level. And I would encourage you to solve that moment architecturally and spatially, so it's clear that this is where you go when you're in a car. So that we aren't relying on, you know, some sort of signage in that location. We'd like to sort of minimize the amount of signage as you come up there. And we just want to make it very clear that this is the entry for the parking. Yeah. And so this is a good view as you're, you know, sort of across the street, but as you approach it, you know, how do you understand in a car at, you know, let's say fifteen miles per hour, how where you're really entering and and not relying on signage in that moment. So maybe it's a landscape solution as much as it is an architectural solution. I the the bottom line is I I think we're moving in the right direction, but I think with some tweaks, we can make this a little bit stronger. And then we could go to the basement level, the garage level for a moment, and this actually comes up in the staff comments. The left-hand side of the garage, the lobby is only accessible by going around that stair. So it is a little bit blind, and I believe those three spots to the left on the upper side, those are the visitor spots. So if I were coming in, I had no idea where I was going, it would be difficult for me to find the lobby. So just give that some thought where that that could be a signage solution. But right now, there is a little bit of a disconnect at that moment. So I think there's something that could be a little bit better there. And then finally, what I like to say is that I really like the the sort of, as Mr. Horning said, I really like the overall mix of the units. We've got, you know, a fair number of one-bedroom units, and I have advocated in the past for smaller units, particularly when we were originally developing our our village overlay zoning and, you know, trying to meet the MBTA community requirements. What I wanted to see were smaller units in these in these developments, and this is a really great start. I don't know if the Lexington market will sort of bear something like this, but you know, even smaller units, studios and things like that, ways to get these units. You know, I mean, see that one, there's one one-bed here that's eight eighty-five. You know, that's a really nice small, I guess there's another one that's nine seventy. There are a few that are under a thousand square feet. Any way that we can get a few of these units where they are smaller would be fantastic. And I also like the fact that we get a handful of three bedrooms in here so that it isn't skewed entirely to the smaller side. So again, I I think this is a real strength of this project that we're getting a really great mix, and it's very encouraging as this is the the first project that we have seen under the village overlay zoning that we're getting the the sort of mix of units that we really spoke about when we were first developing. So this is a really encouraging sign, and I look forward to seeing the sort of further development and, you know, the next iteration of, you know, what you bring before us. So thank you very much. And Mr. Creech, you have your hand raised.
Yes, Mr. Schonbacher. Thanks. Yeah, you reminded me of something. In case Mr. Porter doesn't know, the Champion family and the one eighty-six Bedford Street development, those projects, those apartments, there are thirteen of them, they're all rented very quickly. And I think the biggest one was seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet. And the smallest was a five hundred and nineteen square foot. What do you call it? Not a one-bedroom, a
Studio.
Studio apartment. So you could, their business office is in the red building behind the building on the street. And there's always somebody there if you want to check out the market with him. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss. Thank you very much, Mr. Creech. So with that, I believe Ms. McCabe, we will be continuing this public hearing. Does the applicant feel that our meeting on June twenty-sixth will be sufficient to address the comments that we have, you've heard this evening?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I would go to Mr. Creech for a motion. Oh, sorry, Ms. McCabe.
Can I just add that on June twenty-sixth, there are, there is another public hearing on, so if there's anyone in the audience that's listening, the planning board's meeting does start at six o'clock, but we will usually the Thursday or Friday before the meeting will put, will post the final agenda. So anyone who's listening, I would encourage everyone to contact the planning office or sign up for the planning board's agenda meeting notifications. So as we get closer, we'll kind of have to look at the agenda and the scheduling of the projects to see which one, you know, which one will go first. I'm, you know, I'm just not sure yet. June twenty-sixth could be a long meeting, but the meeting will go on and it'll start at six P M. on Zoom.
Thank you very much. With that, Mr. Creech?
Move to continue the public hearing for five, seven Piper Road. Site plan review to Wednesday, June twenty-sixth at six P M. via Zoom.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. With that, I will take a vote. Mr. Horning?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Creech?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate that and look forward to seeing you on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much.
So we will move to our next item on the agenda, twenty-five Hartwell Ave. Is the applicant here, Ms. McCabe, or probably not, right? We're just
I'm just checking. I don't believe so, but Greatland Realty Partners, they were here at your last meeting, and they're still working on revise the requested plan revision. So they have requested that both twenty-five Hartwell subdivision public hearing and the public hearing for the subdivision at forty Hartwell be continued to your next meeting on Wednesday, June fifth, so that they can submit those soon, and we'll get those back to you when we receive those.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. So with that, I will give Mr. Creech a moment.
I move to continue the public hearing for the definitive subdivision for twenty-five Hartwell Avenue to Wednesday, June fifth, twenty twenty-four, at or after six P M. via Zoom.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yes, you do. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I'll go to a vote. Mr. Creech?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Horning?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That passes unanimously. So we will move on to forty Hartwell, which is the same the same issue. So, Mr. Creech?
I move to continue the public hearing for the definitive subdivision for forty Hartwell Avenue to Wednesday, June fifth, twenty twenty-four, at or after six P M. via Zoom.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I'll go to a vote. Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Horning?
Yes.
Mr. Creech?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to our next item, four forty Bedford Street, which is a review of a proposed sign package. I would hope the applicant is here for that one. If they could raise their hand so that we can promote you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. The applicant from Metro West Sign is here. I just brought him in as co-chair, so I should be able to turn on his camera.
If you could identify yourself for the record, and then the floor is yours.
Yes, my name is Evan Battali. I'm here with Metro Sign and Honing on behalf of the Trammell Co. Company in regards to the new signage package for the new life science building development located at four forty Bedford Street. I'm here to help any, answer any questions in regards to that sign package. I do want to note that that sign package was made in direct coordination with the new sign bylaws that were passed, I believe, a few meetings ago. We have been confirmed to be in compliant standing with all those bylaws, and I believe we are approved at this point.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Mr. Creech?
The other day I was looking at the monument sign, and I was surprised to see the location where it is to the left of the building as you face it, but then I realized that I think one of the reasons is that's where you want vehicles to enter.
Correct.
Is that, is that it? So so I'm I I'm fine with that. Thank you. I I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creech. Uh any other board comments or questions? Seeing none, uh I will open this up for any public comments. Give the public a moment. Seeing no hands raised, I will return to the board for any final comments. Seeing none, I will go to Mr. Creech.
Move that the planning board approved the sign package submitted by Tremel Crow for four forty Bedford Street.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I'll go to a vote. Uh Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Horning?
Yes.
Mr. Creech?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's unanimous. Thank you very much. So that concludes our development administration portion of the meeting. Uh so we will now move on to board administration. Um are there any board member updates?
I have a couple of updates.
Well, Mr. Horning raises his hand first.
Sorry, sneaking in in front of you like that. Um I I just wanted to mention that I'll be presenting to the Hanscom Area Towns Committee about our uh whole process, our whole MBTA zoning process as it's moved forward from two thousand twenty-one to today. Uh in in terms of developing the zoning and uh actually implementing it and having our first public hearing. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Horning. Mr. Creech?
Uh two things, the uh town manager uh search screening committee will have its first meeting either next week or the weekend after, so either May twenty-ninth, thirty thirty-first or um June third or fourth. And um that'll be an in-person meeting. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that the Metropolitan Area uh Council at a legislative breakfast, I mentioned at the last meeting in Bedford, uh which I was unable to attend, but they have uh produced, uh there was a presentation made uh regarding the demographics in this area. So I will share that uh with the board via Ms. McCabe. Thank you. It's interesting and uh I guess not surprising. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creech. Mr. Horning, you have your hand raised again?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention if people have questions, I was at the legislative breakfast.
Thank you. Uh Ms. McCabe?
Thank you. I I just wanted to um update you all that um we did earlier this week. I'm here back from the Attorney General on the fall town meeting zoning change from November. It's special town meeting. Um the Attorney General did approve your change to allow the associate member to be able to act on um a site plan review application in the event that one of the full members couldn't sit on an application. But so that's only in an instance of if there was an inability of one of the full planning board members being able to a- um act due to a conflict or um being away um or an absence of a board member or, you know, vacancy in the board, the chair could then call the associate member. So that it's still um, it still needs to be updated in the zoning bylaw. There was just a a posting requirement that the town clerk has to post, um but the Attorney General did approve that earlier this week.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. Um seeing no other board update, hands raised. Uh we have one set of meeting minutes that we need to approve. Are there any uh further modifications? Uh questions, comments about the minutes from May eighth? Seeing none, I go to Mr. Creech.
Uh I move that we approve meeting minutes, planning board meeting minutes from May eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Uh Mr. Horning?
Did I raise my hand by mistake?
No, no, I was going for a vote. We have a second.
Okay, uh yes.
Thank you. Uh Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Creech?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that passes unanimously. Uh so Ms. McCabe, uh our upcoming meetings.
Their next meeting is um June fifth in two weeks, and then we have, you have a site visit next week. Um about the application that's on for the fifth, so June fifth, followed by June twenty-sixth. Um I know there might be, some of you might have some vacations um scheduled, so you just keep in touch with us. So if you're remote, if you're able to um zoom in on vacation, if not, we'd, um board members are allowed to miss one hearing session. Um and then you would have to sign a certification that you reviewed the tape and all the material. So if you're gonna be away, just you know, I've heard from a couple of you, please let let us know so we can make sure we get you everything that you need so that you can continue to participate on any active applications.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. Um so with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Uh Mr. Creech?
I move that we adjourn the planning board meeting of May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Creech?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Horning?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Nice, thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.